Thank you for joining us today. This is We've Got Issues and I'm Brad Nickerson. We've Got Issues is a nonpartisan citizen-based forum where we look at issues of interest to the Tri-Cities. First, I'd like to thank Tri-City Community TV for making this program possible. Before we get started with today's interview, I'd also like to acknowledge that this program is taking place on the traditional ancestral and unceded territories of the Koiquitlam First Nations. We thank the Koiquitlam people who continue to take care of these lands and all that is above and below. Today, we're talking to councillor Daryl Penner, who has served on the Port Koiquitlam council for a number of terms now and is seeking reelection. Daryl Penner, thank you for being here.
And thanks for inviting me.
Oh, you're more than welcome. So you have been a councillor for a number of years now?
Yes, 23 years. Got elected in 1999.
Okay.
Yeah.
And how's that been for you?
It's been really good. Well, like anything that happens in life, there's ups and downs, but certainly overall, it's been very enjoyable, very rewarding. I feel quite grateful to have been a part of this community and being able to help make decisions that move this community on. So I'm quite thankful for that.
So that would mean that you've been a councillor through a number of mayors?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yeah, Mayor Travély was... I first got elected and it was interesting. Len, I knew Len when I was a young boy. So I've known him, knew him for a long time. And then there was, I believe, Scott Young and then Greg Moore and now Mayor Brad West.
Well, you've done this for a long time. Do you mind if I ask, has it never been attractive to you to be the mayor?
There were times to be, you know... My first term after being on council, I thought that I should run for mayor. That would have been running against Mayor Travély, who did a great job for the community. And, but, you know, everything needs changes at times. And, but very unfortunately, excellent gentleman passed away within a couple of years of, on the first term, so.
Okay. So in that span of time that you've been a councillor, you must have seen a huge change in our community.
Oh, well, not only on council, just my, you know, 50-some years in this community. I mean, walking down Prairie between Cosbrun and Cedar Drive on a Saturday afternoon down the middle of the road with no traffic, thinking about how many people are going to live here. There was the, the ditches on the north side had salmon in them. You know, that's how things changed. And clearly, lots of people decided to move here. But I just remember that particular day. It was in August and that's always kind of been something I thought about, you know, how the community has changed.
Has changed over that period of time. So I'm going to challenge you even a little bit more to tell us more about what that change looks like. What does it look like? What are the big things that you see? Aside from, obviously, there's been a growth in people, but what other kind of changes are you noticing?
Well, certainly homeless issues.
Okay.
We've had, you know, the children that are going to school that are hungry. When I was in school, I just did not notice that. We had one fella, his name was Charlie, and he was down, he lived downtown Poco by the river. And he was really our only visible homeless person. And every once in a while, he would go and get cleaned up and then he would show back up again. And then things changed substantially. When, you know, as, when Riverview got closed down, that was, in my opinion, an absolute disaster. The funding didn't come with what that support needed for those people. So that was the big change for our homeless population, which is really unfortunate.
Because we're a natural, we're a natural place for people to end up, given our proximity to Riverview, I would imagine.
Yeah, and, you know, when Riverview was open, we had, there was really no issues with any of the clients that were there. They would come into downtown Poco. You know, Poco was much smaller, was a real little town at that point. But there was really never any issues. It was, it just worked. The community not only, you know, embraced them, we had a lot of the people that lived in our community worked there. So it was very integrated that way.
All right. So it was an industry, in a sense, for our community. So while you saw those changes, what did, if you don't mind me asking, what did that look like on council? What were the conversations about that on council?
Well, I mean, always compassion for them. Total frustration with the province and the federal government. Because the reality is, is that municipal governments don't collect taxes to deal with those kind of social issues.
Right.
But by default, we end up having to deal with them because it affects our residents when we have people that are homeless and that, and some of them are a real problem people. They have mental health issues and addiction issues. And that needs to be dealt with, you know, through the Health Authority and the province. So not seeing the, really, the level of help that's needed from the provincial and federal government, we, again, I said that we're, by default, we're end up stuck with having to deal with some of these problems. So that is, it's a very unfortunate.
Right, and that's something that's gone, passed, passed along over the years. And as you said, we've seen it growing. So that's something that we're going to have to deal with. What, can I ask again? Because I'm not trying to put you on the spot. But what can a council do to advocate to the, to the higher authorities? In a sense, the provincial government and the federal government? What can councils do to change that situation?
Well, I mean, we have constant dialogue with our MLA and our MP. And that's kind of the avenue, you know, that you, really, that's kind of our avenue that, and be advocates, of course, for them. So part of that landscape is also having affordable housing, non-market housing. And that's something that we can do. I know the last election, there was a lot of people that wanted to see that happen. It was, and housing, of course, is a huge issue, well, in the whole country, but particularly Vancouver is, you know, one of the most expensive cities to live in. So one of the things that we have done and we think we've done very effectively is create a lot of non-market housing that's not subsidized by the taxpayer. So again, back to the idea that, you know, it's really a federal and provincial government's role to deal with, but as a community, how can you create more affordable housing? And so we've done that through nonprofits and with housing density bonuses and so forth. And so we've been creating quite a few units. There's, I think we've got about 800 and some units coming on, online.
Okay, so I'm wondering if we're jumping a little bit ahead. Is that, is that something that you're doing right now? Or is that something that's been, you've been working on since you became a councillor initially?
It's been ongoing. Particularly, well, I mean, 23 years ago, no, we weren't, we weren't dealing with that.
Right.
It's really been probably the last 12 years that that's been something that council has been, you know, working on. We came up with the housing density bonus. So basically, what that is, is that a developer wants to increase the density of a particular spot, area, so that FAR, they would pay a certain amount of dollars per square foot, that money.
FAR?
Florida area ratio.
Okay.
And so that one, that money then goes into a fund to help build non-market housing.
Right, okay. All right, so I'm going to, I'm going to pause a little bit right here and go back a little bit and ask you directly.
Sure.
So in your, and then we're going to, then we'll move on to more of what, what the council in your last term has done. But in your early, in the earliest years up until this last term, what, I'd like to know basically two things. What was your focus in those years? And do you feel like you've accomplished those things while you were doing those? Because I'm interested, I'm interested in that part. Like, it's not often, we haven't really talked to somebody who's been there as long as you. And so, and I think that's really interesting, the process and, and understanding what a councillor sets out to do and what they actually can accomplish in that time. So if you don't mind.
Sure.
I'd like to know about those earlier years that you've done this.
So when I first was elected in 99, the first thing was to frankly get my head screwed on straight, figuring out how this whole machine works.
Right.
It's been very interesting talking to people that, you know, doesn't matter what their age or their background, if they haven't been involved in that, it's a different, it's a different beast. You have to get a, try to get a really good understanding on how it all works. So that was the first thing that I had to do. But my goal going into it was to have better development. My underlying reason for getting on the council is there was a development that took place on the north side that came very close to Hyde Creek. And I thought that was absolutely ridiculous, that we would be pushing houses right up to the edge of Hyde Creek when it's a greenfield development, meaning there was nothing there before. So I wanted to ensure that that was, you know, we would change that. And then develop policies that would, that would limit those kind of things. And in concert with that, you had the Fisheries Act and so forth. So, so those, all those things kind of changed since I was on council.
Okay.
I wanted to have a city hall that was much more receptive to people coming in with new ideas. It wasn't like that when I first got elected. I thought that was, you know, this is, this is a, city hall is a building for all of us. And it's a place that people should feel comfortable. And if they have ideas and they want to do something, that they should be able to at least express them with, and not feel bad about, you know, being criticized about it. So that was, that was kind of the underlying thing that I really wanted to see happen.
When you say they shouldn't feel bad about criticizing, do you mean that they shouldn't, they shouldn't go away feeling like they were criticized?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe that's a better, better way, sorry.
Just clear that up a little bit.
Yes, okay.
Yeah. Okay, and so making city hall more accessible to regular people, that's what I think I heard you say.
You know, I mean, the catchphrase is transparent, transparent government.
Right.
Sure, you can say that, but I think it's, I mean, if you have good dialogue with, with the city, you have a better understanding of how it works. And that's usually most people, because, you know, like I was saying earlier, people that get elected are trying to figure out how it works. So well, if you're not in it and a person just shows up, how would you expect them to know how it works? So if it's clear enough and the person that wants to take the time to learn, then it hopefully helps them navigate through the city.
Do you, so over the years, do you think you've been successful with that? Is that like?
I, yes, I think very successful. And it's not, so it's not always, it's not just one person. I mean, you could be an advocate and that's, you know, that's the best that you can do. You have seven people. And so it's going, it's at, the worst case, it's four people that decide. But it's, you know, ideally, the process that is that you have, generally, you have most councils, most of council is an agreement. And that seems to be, I think, the, you know, the best indication that the policy or whatever you're working on is successful.
Right. So, and tell me, with regards to exactly that, tell me if I'm wrong. A motion is put forward to the council and it's something that you're considering and there's a really robust discussion about it. And after that robust discussion, they come to some, hopefully, they come to terms where everyone gets something out of the process and agrees on whatever that was, what it should look like.
Right.
Right?
And the robust discussion is one thing, but it's be respectful. We see this, you know, this has come, you know, much more forward in the, now, that, you know, to be, have a respectful workplace and so forth. And our council, since I've been on it, really, we have prided ourselves in trying to be respectful, have debate. I mean, we've, the years I've been on council, we've had some real, real arguments.
Okay.
But when it, when they, when the discussion is over, it's over. You make your, you do the vote and that's it. And it makes it much better for the next time when you're going to bring something forward.
Right.
That the baggage isn't there.
Right.
Because there's no reason, there's no way you should ever vote against something because somebody else voted against what you did, or what you put forward.
Right.
It's a very, it's, you're not focused in on what is in the best interest of the community.
Right. It's not a tit-for-tat.
No.
It's more of a...
It should never be that way.
Right, right, all right. So, okay, so I'm going to just ask one more time, anything else that you remember from when you began to be, when you first became a councillor, to, that you set out to do? And if there's, if you want, we'll just move on to this most recent term.
Sure. Well, one of the things that I was involved with in my very early years and continue on has been developing trails. Trail system in Poco, growing up, you know, we used those trails like our own roads. And it certainly is something that people really enjoy. It's a piece of infrastructure that almost every person can use. Not everyone, but the vast majority. And so one of the things was to develop better trail systems and put more money into the trail systems. And I was, I worked hard. I actually took staff out, called it "tully tromping", took them through the bush and saying, here's, here's some of the little trails. They're not really defined, but this would take you, you know, like up to Chelsea Park and that whole area. And, you know, and here's how we can have these integrated continuous loops of trails. And so that's something that I've always been a champion of and will continue to be.
As someone who uses the Poco Trail almost every day, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, when it was started, you know, I'm sure the people that had started it did not understand or would not have understood how great of an asset that trail is.
Absolutely. It is, although it's a bit of a secret, I think, in the Lower Mainland, it is truly a gem of a trail.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, not many communities have that. All right, so let's, let's move forward to the last term. We'll just quickly go in that term. And I want to ask you, what was your, what were the things that you were trying to achieve in the last, this last four-year period?
Well, we had, one of the things that was a big interrupter was COVID. So that, I'll put a place hole in that for now. So the previous election, we had, we had put in a, it was a levy for the community center.
Okay.
And that was an incredibly clear indication from the community on the support of that. They wanted to see that, that facility built. So that was actually one of the biggest focuses of, I mean, not only myself, of course, but all of council. It was, you know, all the council fully understood that. And we needed it as a community. Then, making sure that we're not going to be taxed to death on it. And how do we, so we spend, I think our council spends a tremendous amount of time focusing on finance, which I will put the plug in, we're the third lowest tax community in all of Metro Vancouver. And that's not us saying that, that is Metro Vancouver saying that. And we managed to, we managed to get that community center built during COVID, on time and on budget.
Okay.
And I would challenge you to try to find how many government organizations can say, "We did this on time and on budget."
Sure.
And that was during COVID. And you had a lot of, a lot of price increases and stuff. I mean, timing is, of course, adds everything on a lot of things. But, you know, the fact that we had gotten our contracts in place and we spent a tremendous amount of time going through those budgets all, all the time. And our, of course, staff were paramount in dealing with that. They did a great job.
Sure. Anything else that was a priority at that time?
Well, certainly, you know, back to when we, 12 years ago or so, when we really started focusing on a non-market housing, that was a, that was a big thing. The last election, again, people commented on that. So we, we worked very hard at working, sorry, at getting more non-market housing units online that were not subsidized by the taxpayers.
Sure.
And so we managed to get a lot of that.
Okay, that's going to go on too, isn't it?
Absolutely.
What, what do you think, because, and I don't know the answer to this, so I'm very curious. What is the time?
Well, I hope I do.
Pardon me?
I hope I do, whatever your question is.
Well, I think that you might have a little bit more of an insight. You might have heard more. What is the timeline for what they think the influx of people in our community is going to be? Like, I know years ago, I heard about all the communities in the Lower Mainland needed to brace themselves for an influx of people moving to the Lower Mainland. And we're still feeling that. But what is the period of time we think that that's going to go on? And that's, I know that that's a tough question because...
It's, it doesn't matter what, the projections are, what I can see, they're projections to a certain period.
Right.
What's going to happen, you know, in 20, well, 2030, I think, is what the projection period is. And it's at, I think, the projection at that time. And this was a projection by Metro Vancouver.
Right.
Or GVRD at the time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think it was around 80,000.
80,000.
Yeah, so we're, I think, around 61,000, 62,000 right now.
Right.
But then moving forward.
Yeah.
We have, Metro Vancouver, we have somewhere around 1,200 people coming in a month. And we only have about 500, 600 starts.
Yeah.
So that by itself is fundamentally the problem.
Right. So, okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to ask you, like, this is, I hope it's fair. And it's, the question is speculation. Well, I'm going to ask you to speculate here a little bit.
I don't usually like to speculate.
Okay, well, then just let's make it an opinion and it's just you and me and we're not in front of a camera or anything like that.
Like these ones?
Like the ones that are, yeah, right here. No, so what, how do you think we're going to handle this problem? Because if the projections just go to 2030, it's still, there's still going to be pressure. What do you, what do you wish for future councils? Now, they're projecting, what do you, how should future councils approach this? And what should they be doing? Should we continue to spread out like we've seen on Burke Mountain? Or at one point, are we going to have to make a choice to go up?
Well, we're already making that choice to go up.
To go up.
We are, I mean, our choice is to densify.
Yeah.
Densified, like towers are actually a far more environmentally friendly footprint than, than spreading out. I'm absolutely opposed to urban spread, urban sprawl. It, infrastructure, you build more and more infrastructure, people drive more and more, all those things, so.
And that's costly to people, isn't it?
Very much so.
When you build two miles from a city core, you have to build all that infrastructure.
Right.
Out there. And who, who pays for that infrastructure?
Well, I mean, it's, developers pay for it, taxpayers pay for it. Everyone pays for it at the end of the day.
Right.
But...
But it's costly.
It's costly. The council of any city has the ability to, to say, yes, we'll densify here and we're not going to densify here.
Yeah.
So that's really, you know, it's really in the hands of every government. Just because the projection says that's what we're doing doesn't say that we're bound by any kind of legal.
Right.
Legal document thing you have to densify. You know, there's lots of advantages to densification because when you have a high-density area, you, businesses that then can open up and people that live in the area can support those ones. So, you know, buying their groceries, buying whatever they need, they don't have to drive.
Right.
And that's why, you know, densifying and going up, why that is much, it's a much better approach.
Right.
If you believe that you should have more people coming into your community.
So you would probably have your ear to the community better. Do people in Port Koiquitlam support that?
I think they support it in places that make sense.
Okay.
And I think that's, so that's, that's the key part there, that makes sense to the community. So when you're developing your official community plan, that you look at areas that have the best access to public transit so that the people that live there can ideally walk there. The public transit is kind of out of our hands to a great degree, but, but that's, that's part of the metro, excuse me, metro plan for the transit, the translink plan. So, so that's where you want to focus in on those developments. Because you will have, and we've seen in other areas in Poco where you have single-family homes, excuse me for a minute, that, you know, that will then get taken down and then you densify those areas. And I know, you know, usually the comments that we get from people on densification is, well, there's going to be more traffic. Definitely there will be to a degree. So the, the, I guess, the conundrum that you're in is that, do you densify, which does create more, more traffic? Or do you, do you not densify and then spread out? Which is, which would create even more traffic.
Yeah.
Because of all the roads. And there's a saying that build it and they will come. You build a road, you can never build your, history is showing throughout other major cities is that you can't build yourself at the end of the day out of traffic jams. The more roads you build, I mean, you look at what happened, Highway 1, right? East and West, out in Abbotsford. All of a sudden, all these people moved out to Abbotsford, they buy acreage and all that. And then, and now they're all driving in and it's just a parking lot.
Right, and on top of that, it becomes attractive to developers to develop farther out.
Yeah.
And create those, those farther out developments.
Right.
Right, okay, so I'm using up all the time talking about other things. And what's really the most important thing here, and we have now the littlest time for, is this next new run. You're going to, you're, you're running for the same seat, not running for mayor, I think we've established.
Yes.
We're running for the same seat in this next election. What do you want to accomplish in that?
Well, it might not sound so sexy to say the same thing I've been working on. Living in the community as long as I have, I think I've got a pretty good pulse of what, what we want.
Sure.
And the continuation of making sure we develop our trails, making sure that we have good non-market housing and that we have lots of different forms of housing. Because you don't want to have just one type of housing. So, and, you know, having mixed-use buildings where you have commercial and you got residential, I think those are very important to, to bring forward. And keeping an eye on the, on our taxes. But not only keeping an eye on the taxes, but ensure that we have good quality services. That is, it's frankly super easy to cut taxes. But then it's like, if you're cutting taxes, what are you going to, what's coming off? What are you not going to do? And usually you get the complaints that, well, this used to be here and now I can't do this.
That's, that's a, see, like, you put your finger on what is, for me, a huge, huge issue. Is I think that a lot of times, people don't understand the relationship between taxes and the services, the government services.
Right.
In this case, we're talking municipally, the municipal services that you get. If we cut those taxes, if we, if we focus on a low-tax approach all the time, it means it's going to limit what the quality of life is.
Absolutely.
If we're not careful.
And that's that balance.
Right.
You know, I mean, I, I want to live in a community that has high-quality services, that looks nice, it's well taken care of. I mean, you, as soon as, and you've seen this in lots of cities, as soon as you have areas that are not well taken care of, you know, houses are dilapidated or you have commercial areas that are boarded up and then, you know, and then crime comes in. I mean, you have, you know, graffiti, we have graffiti now. But, but that urban blight just seems to, you know, keep moving.
It could spread.
It's spread. So it's really important that you, that you keep that in mind all the time. I mean, we should, we should be glad to live in our city. We should be proud to live in the city. And as other communities, they should be also proud. So creating that, creating that environment is kind of the most important. So creating that, creating that environment is kind of the most important thing overall.
I'm, I'm thinking this is, this has been a really, a very interesting conversation. It's, it's a short period of time and there are 22,000 other things that I'd like to discuss with you with regard to that. But I don't want to be remiss in talking, in putting, talking about one of the passions that I have. And my friends in the community would be, would be upset with me if I didn't bring it up. I want to talk to you about art in our community.
Yep.
Where do you see, do you see that there's a place for that? And is there any plans in the future of expanding the, the opportunities for young people in the arts?
Well.
I know that's tough because.
No, it's, it's fair. It's, it's really interesting that we, the surveys that we've had, when, when, when the public is asked about arts, and this is not my opinion, this is just a survey.
Sure, no.
That the arts actually come quite low. Except for when people, when they talk about other places in the world on how wonderful they are, and you go to Europe and everything. Their arts culture is so rich and they talk about that. So there seems to be a disconnect between the average person and, and arts. But the average person always, always loves the arts. So when they, when they, they appreciate it. So going back to having a city that is a great place to live. Well, the arts is, is really important to have. And it's a balance again with, you know, with budgets. We've had, we, we built Lee Square.
Sure.
And that was a, to be an arts village. There's been some changes that's happened. We certainly have supported the arts quite, quite a bit. And the arts community, it's, it's, that needs to also work together and then come to the city and say, you know, here is what all, if you could collectively have all of the arts groups in one group and agree on stuff, this is where we want to move forward.
Right.
We did that with, with sports.
Yeah.
And it worked, has worked out extremely well. We would love to see that happen, have a really cohesive arts council that we can, we can have that conversation with, if I'm re-elected in the next term. That would be, that would be, give us really clear directions. We, the, the council has never had a problem supporting the arts. I mean, it's pretty obvious what we've done to date.
Okay.
But, but yeah, it's, I, I like, you know, I mean, as you know, I, I play music. I think music is just paramount, you know, certainly in my life and, and I think for most people.
So I did not know that. No, you've just created, gone from 22,000 to 26,000 questions. And what you said about the arts, you've really provided a fabulous answer and I really appreciate that those people, if they hear it, it sort of prescribes what they should be doing. So thank you for that. But you encouraged me to ask the final question, which is with regards to reaching out to people. Because I think people reaching out to you is, are people, are you accessible to people? And, and is that a realistic way that people should contact and make sure that they've, they've talked to people like you about what they want for the city?
Of course. I mean, that's what we are as a, you know, your council and, you know, as myself, we represent the community. And it's always, always interested, always wanted to know if there's something that's really missing, what is it? And how can that be changed? You know, and nothing to do with arts. But, you know, just one person coming in saying, this is what I want to see happen, is not a real, true test of what needs to be done. And that's why it's important that, you know, that people do talk to council not only about the arts, but about any, anything.
Any issue, absolutely.
And ideally, not at an election time.
Yes.
Because there's four years behind, you know, and, and so the next term. You know, talk to your, talk to the council all the time.
So council is accessible to individuals, but it's better if you come as a group with issues so that they, the council sees that there's backing behind it?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and, and that's what our council's for.
Yes.
Daryl, this has been fabulous speaking to you. I really appreciate you coming in and talking to us. And thank you for taking the time with us.
Well, thank you very much for having me. Appreciate it, appreciate all the work that you folks are doing.
Great, thank you very much. This has been, we've got issues. We've been talking with councillor Daryl Penner, who is running for election in this, the campaign that's October 15th?
16th, I believe.
16th. The election is on October 16th. Please make sure that you come out and vote. Thank you to Tri-City Community TV for having us and hosting us here today. Thank you.